Good evening, Camby. I'm going to call to order the January 22nd, 2025 Urban Renewal Agency meeting. First item on the agenda is to elect a chair and vice chair.
Do you still want to continue as chair?
I would.
Okay.
Got another nod? Well, I think we need a formal motion.
I will make a motion then to continue to have Agency Chair Hensley as the chair.
Second.
Thank you, I accept that. All of those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I don't have to say anybody opposed because everybody nodded. Okay, very well. And then finally, on this agenda item, we need a vice chair. Vice Chair Hudson, would you care to continue in your role?
I would. I mean, it's-
I'll make a motion to appoint Brian Hudson as the vice chair.
I would second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that all passes six zero. All right, it says none at this time. Do we have any citizen input that has come in recently, Teresa? Okay, then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda, which include the approval of the Urban Renewal Agency September 4th, 2024 meeting minutes, and approval of Member Sean Varwig to the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
All right, it's been, motions have been made by Vice Chair Hudson, seconded by Commissioner Davis, to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes from the September 4th, 2024 Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and the appointment of Member Sean Varwig to the Urban Renewal Agency Budget Committee with a term ending September 30th, 2027. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes six zero. Moving right along, we, the last item on our agenda is an update on the Camby logging road path. Eileen?
Yes, Commissioners, this was originally going to be on the city councils meeting agenda, but it is an urban renewal project, so we moved it to, to the Urban Renewal Agency portion of the meeting. So with that, I'm going to have Jerry and Jamie both come up and give you a briefing on the logging road pathway project.
Okay, very good. Jerry, Jamie? You're the next contestant.
Good evening. Jamie Sickel, Director of Economic Development.
Jerry Nelson, Camby Public Works Director.
And much like Eileen Stein said, that she had asked if we would come and provide an update to the logging bridge path. As a reminder, this is one of the projects that you, or the Urban Renewal Agency had identified as a priority project for this fiscal year. This pathway would be on the southwest side of, how would you say that? The southwest side of the logging road, and it will connect the logging road to Highway 99 where the sidewalks are. This is to get around people using the short spur rail line as an access point to Fred Meyer when walking from the logging road or logging bridge across to Highway 99. In the past, while we were exploring this option, we also looked at an option to put a bridge over the railroad, and that was cost prohibitive. So before having this go up to bid, we wanted to bring the project back to you. We have the engineering rendering plan up there, and I'll turn it over to Jerry.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we were trying to get a rendering together, but we didn't have time, so this is what we're going to have to kind of go off of. And it's about 450 feet long, starting up, as you can see where those concrete, you know, rails come out. It'll start on the other side of that, and it'll come down and kind of weave down, and they'll put a retaining wall in, and kind of between that storage unit office and the bridge, and come down just to the south of the union, or the private rail tracks. And so anyways, the nice thing about this, it's an eight foot, it's nothing fancy, it's an eight foot wide asphalt path, and it all meets ADA. And we own the property. It's on our property, so it's a pretty shovel-ready project. They're not going to pour concrete walls, they're going to set them stackable blocks in there, they make heavy ones, and then it'll be cyclone fenced, so people can't fall for safety. So they're good, just to give you guys a quick update, we're just now wrapping up the alleys that was a urban renewal project. They came way under budget, came in at $371,000. So we're finishing those up, so that helps us with the path. We had $1,147,000 budgeted for these two projects. Engineer estimate, just to be give you guys safe numbers, this project with engineering, we're very confident will not exceed $550,000. We think it'll come in considerably lower than that, but I don't want to shell-shock anyone if something changes. So with, with the alleyways, paying that out of the $1,147,000, that left us with $776,000 for projects. So coming in at 550 even puts us under budget on that. So it's, these are all manageable, doable, this is a doable project, so shell, ready to go. If you guys give us the go-ahead, give the city administrator the go-ahead, we could have this thing out to bid hopefully within a month.
Madam Chair, my shell-shock isn't, it is at the price, but the fact that it is as low as it is. I think I was expecting it to be much, much higher than, than that.
We were too. And originally, we didn't think we were going to have the money, we didn't think we could do it for 776, the 776,000 we had left over. So we were actually looking at having just design done and Public Works building this thing. But with the price coming in and all the other workload we have to do, we wanted to come forward and just make sure you guys were okay with us using this money to build this thing.
And so this is coming down from the logging trail to the property right between the trail and the storage unit?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not hitting on the railroad property at all?
Nope.
It's coming on that west side of that, southwest side of the, the bridge. Okay.
Yeah, you can kind of see, if you drive down there and look, we went in there and cleared it, and you can kind of see up there, and we got up there just so we could get surveyors in there, and the grade was really cooperative on this, to build it. It, it actually worked out good, you know, because we were thinking, a lot of people thinks, you know, we were trying to go over the tracks and have something go right into Fred Meyer's. Even Eileen said she's walking on our path now and was wondering about that, and we talked about that before the time, but we didn't remember, it was, what was it, over $2 million?
I think it was 2.2 or 2.7 million dollars. And, you know, this is one of those projects that has been talked about a lot for many, many years of, of how can we find a pathway, pathway forward? I did not mean to, to put the pun in there. But when we were discussing whether we were ready to go out to bid and, and making sure that we had the go-ahead from the city administrator, she had the thought that we should make sure that we bring it back, so that it's not just a project that's been discussed that we, you know, we assume everybody's up to date on, but that we wanted to just bring it to you, kind of go over the, the high-level details, and make sure that we, once again, got your blessing since we haven't been, before you talking about projects since May of, of last year.
Yeah. No, this is a great project, and I'm glad we're finally to a point where we can do something to be able to have that access come off of there, right there on 99. So yeah, definitely think, I mean, I'm for it. I definitely would like to see once the next step is designed, you know, so yeah, I think when, right, is that the next step?
The next step is, we could bring a rendering, but we're ready to go out to bid. We, what I would like to do is bring back the price, the bid. And if you guys think it's reasonable, and we'll have renderings and stuff like that at that point, if you guys think it's, I know it kind of puts pressure on you to do the project if I do it that way, but the rendering's tough to do on this, just, I mean, they would have to do some aerial and some side stuff because it's kind of wedged between the bridge and the, and I really honestly didn't want to spend a couple thousand dollars on a rendering unless you guys wanted it. So especially being urban renewal money, we want to be purely, I mean, I, we want to be cautious with all our money, but I know there's not a lot of this left, and so.
No.
But if you can visualize it, it's just going to be an eight-foot wide walking black paved path with a cyclone fence along the side of it going down, so we can't, no one can fall off of it or get into the, into the storage unit property.
So it's running parallel to the logging trail?
Yep.
Okay.
Exactly parallel. And if any of you guys want to go take a look at it, just let me know, I can meet you out there, and I can explain the project if you wanted a visual.
Well, we'd like field trips.
Anytime, let me know, Mayor.
Truck talks with Jerry.
Yeah, because it, it, when you go look at it, it really makes sense. We, you know, when we started, it was more money because we were looking at lighting, you know, and a whole bunch of different stuff, and the way it opens it up, I don't think we're going to need it, but we're going to have it set up, so if we ever did have to light it, we could throw stuff in there. We're not going to land lock ourselves anywhere.
Okay, that was going to be my question, can it be improved later if needed?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Waterman, do you have any comments?
No. I just want to say thanks for going so under budget on the alleyway.
Yeah.
That's, it was good to hear that.
And they look really, I mean, it's the interesting things that you learn when you work for city government or you, you start to like, but to be able to look at the alleyways and know what they were before, and I, I think about the time before Oregon City Brewing was actually in the building, you know, standing during a rainstorm, back from the alleyway, just watching it puddle, you know, it looked like a pond. And so now to be able to drive through the alleyways and that they're updated and they look so nice, it's, it's, it was a great project, and, and I'm glad that they're finished.
Yes.
Nearly finished, rather.
Yeah.
The other thing of that too, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine, keep going.
Was, we had really good coordination with all the other utility providers of getting in there, so we're not cutting our new alleys. They, we got our water taken care of with Cub, Direct Link, everyone got their stuff in, and they took advantage of it because we didn't have to pave it back. So it saved everyone money. So this, those were great projects, and finally finished up.
Good.
Finally closed. They'll hopefully be finished up completely tomorrow.
Excellent. Love to hear that. Commissioner Penn?
So one of the things that kind of, from years ago, that was talked about with doing this alleyway project was, at the planning commission level, there was, the city didn't really have standards per se about what these alleyways should be engineered to look like, and so the theory was by doing those alleys, it would give the city a chance to kind of figure out what the engineering really should be whenever these alleyways are either put in or redone. In doing this project, have, has that, is that the next step, is that we'll essentially work on folding that into?
It's, they're actually adopted in our last Public Works Design Standards.
Okay.
So we updated that sometime after that point, and so we were able to follow those design standards, and then now we can make developers do it if they do any type of work in those alleys. So, so yes, that is done. So we did get that complete.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
And that they would be the, the gold standard, so that we can invite people into our downtown and see the gold standard, what the alleyway should look like as far as design standards go.
I, I will say, I got to really thank Eagle Elsner and Spencer Pollak on this, because when we engineered them, and then we got there and everything was so flat, they were like, we don't know how we're going to do this, you know, without puddles. And so they kind of got Eagle Elsner, kind of worked with Spencer, and they just did a lot of extra work on their dime to make them right. And so I want to really thank Spencer and Eagle on this, they, Eagle Elsner, they did a really exceptional job on the alleyways.
Awesome.
And on the economic development front, they also coordinated with the businesses downtown that were affected by having alleyways closed. I think they did a marvelous job, so it was great to hear feedback from businesses saying, I knew who to call, they came right out, they made the adjustments, and, you know, whether it was late on a Friday or, you know, in the middle of a project, they really worked with the businesses, which is very helpful.
That's awesome.
Yeah, fun project.
Very good.
So do we need an actual motion on this?
Do we need just consensus?
Or just a consensus?
This was just a status report on this.
Yep.
Just a status report on this project.
Right. Go forth, number one.
Okay, we'll bring you back.
Now we just need to scrub those rust spots off and really be looking sharp.
Well, that's something that we can talk about in the future if we get this project done.
Hang somebody upside down on the bridge and just go.
Who's nimble around here?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. Okay, that is the end of the agenda, but I do need to backtrack, Teresa, I did notice, I didn't notice when we were all saying the words, but in the motion, we made the budget committee term end on September 30th, when it's actually supposed to be June?
Correct.
Do we need to redo that motion, or can we just make you correct it and call it good? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we had all of our i's dotted, t's crossed, et cetera. All right, that is the end of the business. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Submoved.
Seconded.
All right, non-deniable motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you at seven o'clock, Camby. All right, we'll see you at seven o'clock, Camby.
Good evening, Camby. Welcome to the January 22nd, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting. If you please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Dear Father, thank you so much for the beautiful weather and beautiful sunrises that you've given Camby these last couple of days. I ask you for, again, continued protection on the firefighters from across the Northwest that are down in Los Angeles. Please bring them home, safe and sound, and especially our guys that are down there from our own fire district. I ask for prayers for our new president as he begins office, as well as our state legislature as they come back into session to handle the business of our state. Please look after us, provide us wisdom here to lead our city in the way that is, in the best way that we can. I ask in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice, fair and honest.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is new employee introductions.
Yay.
And I think Eileen, we have a new employee.
We have a new employee, and George is going to, excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor.
Chief Tro is going to introduce.
I'm actually going to let Sergeant Charmota introduce this new employee of the city, because he is the supervisor of this program, so Sergeant Charmota.
Excellent. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So we're here tonight to introduce you to Creed. Creed is our new K-9 officer. He's about a two-and-a-half-year-old Czech shepherd. Creed and Officer Young here just wrapped up about an eight-week training course put on by a Gresham Police K-9 handler and master trainer with the Oregon Police K-9 Association. For those of you that aren't familiar with the K-9 program, Creed's primary job is going to be helping us on patrol, apprehending, locating apprehending felony suspects, suspects associated with felony crimes, or in some cases violent misdemeanor crimes. Yeah, Officer Young.
Yeah, so yeah, Gresham PD Sean Devore put on the training for us. He's a master trainer through OPCA, former chair. The course was approximately anywhere from 240 to 320 hours. We were closer to about the 320-hour mark. We certified on December 10th. Our certification is good for one year, and it's a five-year appointment for myself, so we will have to recertify every year. Through training, I'll just keep it short and brief. There are a lot of focuses that we had to hit on. First was in the classroom, we would study case law, psychology of the dog itself, handler's mindset, training aspects, health, nutrition, maintenance of the dog, cattle maintenance, those sorts of things, and then it would transfer into the field. So then we'd work on article searches, and that started with just simply having a steel washer in the box and odor recognition that way, and then proceeded out into the field. And we'd start with 50-yard tracks, and by the end, by the time we graduated, our graduation track was a mile long. Creed's nose is excellent. We also worked on apprehension, and with apprehension, that was a lot of decoying for myself and other handlers in the school, so a lot of bite work. And let's see here, what else? Yeah, Creed is an excellent dog, and I'm excited. Thank you, guys, for this opportunity to achieve. Sergeant, thank you. We have a great team, guys. Very excited.
Now, Sergeant Charmota, how long has it been since we've had a K-9 unit?
So most recently was our narcotics detection dog that I was the handler for for a number of years. She's been retired for three years. Before then, the patrol side, it's probably been six or seven years since we've had a patrol dog. And I think Officer Farmer, Sergeant Farmer, was the last patrol dog that we had.
Excellent. Well, we are glad that you brought Creed by to get some camera time and to meet our new employees. So thank you, Officer, for taking on the training and doing this. This is a huge piece to Camby police work, so thank you very, very much, you guys. Thanks for bringing him by.
Thank you very much. Councilor Davis, did you want to go say hi?
No, thank you.
I'm sensing the story there. Well, perfect. Thank you, guys, for that. That's wonderful.
He's a pretty dog.
For that handler, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we don't see you, though. What happened?
I don't know why that's, my camera has been really weird today. Did that on my earlier meeting.
There we go. Well, we don't see you, but we see your name. That's better than nothing.
I just had a quick, are they, I just wiped you guys from my screen.
Wait, what?
I don't know.
I can't see you guys either now.
We're still here if you can hear us.
Okay, I can hear you. Now, where do you guys source the dogs from? What kennel are they from?
Yeah, Creed is from Abilhorst Kennies in Ontario, California. A number of agencies throughout the West Coast pick their dogs from their patrol dogs and their detection dogs.
Now, is he primarily narcotics, or does he do bomb retrieval as well?
No, just patrol and apprehension.
Okay. Outstanding one. I've been on the other side of the bite with a suit on before, and I will tell you, that was not a whole lot of fun, but it was really wild.
He's so pretty.
He has a very big head, yes.
Well, congratulations and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
He's so pretty. Good boy.
That's awesome. All right, next on the agenda this evening is the, sorry, citizen input and community announcements, so an opportunity for citizens to address the council on non-agenda items. If you are so wishing to address the council, please fill out a yellow card on the back podium there and bring it to our city recorder, and we will make sure that you are given time, usually about three minutes. I do allow a little bit of latitude on that. If you are meaning to make comments or whatnot online, please reach out the day of our city council meeting before four o'clock and let our city recorder know, and she will make sure you get queued up for making any comments. The only yellow card I have right now is Karen Fenton. And regarding the newsletter, Karen, hello, how are you?
Hi, good. How are you?
Good. It's good to see you.
All right. So, good evening. I'm Karen Fenton, and I've been a resident of Camby for the past 30 years. And I'm here tonight to speak on the need for a monthly newsletter, created and distributed by the city for the benefit of its citizens, local businesses, and visitors. Is this okay?
You're doing great. Yep.
This type of newsletter would support not only better communication, but provide more transparency and increase trust in our city government. For decades, Camby, like so many small towns, had a locally owned and reliable newspaper that provided this service. But times have changed, and the Camby Herald is no longer locally owned and seems more focused on youth sports than information about our community. We can no longer rely on the Herald to provide the information we need about what's happening in our city. Having a monthly newsletter would bring more focus to the communication efforts of the city. And from my perspective, the current communication plan, if one exists, is for each department to decide when, how, and if it is communicating with the citizens. There seems to be a good variety of communication vehicles. There's email, social media, the city website, and local bulletin boards, but they lack consistency and regularity. A monthly newsletter would give citizens, businesses, and visitors a more focused message and consistent updates on critical issues facing our city. It would also allow for better feedback from the community on improving communications with citizens. Other small communities like ours, other small communities in our area like Wilsonville and Hubbard, provide this service to the citizens. So asking the city of Camby to do likewise does not seem burdensome. Camby would benefit from a monthly newsletter, and I ask that the city council and city staff make this a priority for 2025. So I'd like to give you a couple lists of signatures that I collected of citizens that would also like to see a newsletter. And then I have a couple copies of Hubbard's newsletter. Wilsonville's newsletter is really extensive, and so a lot to print out, which I didn't do. So, and to mention that Hubbard's newsletter, they also produce it in Spanish.
So Karen, if you wouldn't mind giving that to our city recorder, and then she'll make copies of it and make sure it gets distributed to the council and whatnot. I do know that that, the communication piece that you're referring to was a goal of ours in 2024, and I know that that is, and I'll turn it over to Eileen here in a second, but that is something that we have as a goal and are wanting to try to figure out how to do it in a cost-efficient way, but also one that is, can be consistent and thorough. So I'll, Eileen, do you want to speak to?
Yeah, just a couple thoughts. Right now, we are preparing a communications plan to address a number of initiatives in the city. And so that is coming. As well, I just started drafting a First Friday memo that goes out to the city organization. We could take the First Friday memo and publish it, put it on our website and social media, and make it available to the community as well. So that's another thought as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Okay. Great. Teresa, is there anyone online tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, perfect. We were going to have an update on, from Chief Matt Dale, but I believe he's finishing up his fire district meeting this evening, and will be here, I think, shortly. Is that my understanding? Okay. So when he comes in, we will give him that opportunity. It was just to give the community an update on, there's been a couple of emails and some things sent to me regarding Camby's wildfire preparedness. So Council President Hensley and I had asked Eileen to reach out to Chief Dale to have him come and give us just kind of a, an overview on Camby's preparedness, should something like that truly happen, like we've seen it come close in the past, but what would that look like here in Camby? So when he gets here, we'll do that. So we'll put that piece on pause. The next piece then is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda that includes the minutes of the January 8th, 2025 Regular City Council Meeting, the appointment of Member Sean Barwig to the Camby Budget Committee with a term ending June 30th, 2027, the reappointment of Member John Molampi.
Yep.
Goodness, I was afraid I was going to kill that name. Molampi to the Camby Utility Board for a term ending February 28th, 2028. Malamphy to the Canby Utility Board for a term ending February 28th, 2028.
So a motion has been made by Council President Hensley and second by Counselor Patton to approve the consent agenda, which includes the January 8th, 2025, city council regular meeting minutes, as well as appointment of Member Sean Barwig to the Canby Budget Committee with a term ending June 30th of 2027, and then reappointment of Member John Malamphy to the Canby Utility Board for a term ending February 28th, 2028. Any questions or discussion? The only piece I will add is that earlier this evening, we had an Urban Renewal Agency meeting, and so Budget Committee Member Sean Barwig will also be on the Budget Committee for the Urban Renewal Agency, so he'll do double duty in that regards. And then for Canby Utility Board, Mr. Malamphy has been, I think he's in the middle of his third or fourth trip around the Canby Utility Board, so a very well-experienced board member for Canby Utility, so can't go wrong with either one of those. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Counselor Maldonado, were you a yea or a nay?
Yea.
Thank you. That passes 6-0. Next on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions, and that's, first up is ordinance number 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Ming Hanan Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of a Public Works fuel card lock station and project that will come up for a second reading on February 5th. And with that, are we going over to Jerry right away?
We are going over to Jerry.
Mr. Nelsin?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Nelsin, Canby Public Works Director. Excited to be here tonight with bringing this project forward finally. We've been working on it. I think it's gone through a past budget cycle, and we're finally there. We, just to give you guys a reminder of this, we started this after the ice storm, when we had, when all of us were struggling getting diesel fuel with the power outages and everything else with keeping the city running, with drinking water, and emergency crews, and Public Works, and our wastewater plant was struggling with keeping fuel running. So we came to you, folks, and I think you guys kind of are pushing Public Works in the direction of looking into a fuel station. So we did a lot of research. We worked with all the local groups, Canby Fire, Police, Canby Utility, everything, and we worked, went out, got a consultant. The consultant put together the plans, worked with us. We went through Planning Commission, got it approved, and now we put this project out to bid. And what we put out to bid was a fuel island at Public Works. We will have 12,000 gallons of diesel and 24,000 gallons of gas. That's the size of the tanks. If we buy, we will, we're going to buy in bulk, so we get a substantial savings on fuel. I've heard up to 60 cents a gallon. We'll see it if that's true or not. I've heard that from other contractors, if we buy 10,000 at a time. So with the sizing of those tanks, when we drop down to our levels where we order fuel at 10,000, 5,000 of each, at our lowest point of what we have on site, we would have potentially three months of operation during an emergency situation. So this will run off the emergency generator that will power it at Public Works. The biggest thing, the other savings is, is we're not all deadheading clear to the other end. Pacific Pride, as you know, is clear on the other end of town for Public Works. So having this there is going to be a huge convenience. And so that being said, we got, we solicited out, we got four bids, and you can see the price came in, I think, $1,135,210, I believe, was low bid. And we budgeted, it's kind of hard to see in the budget what we budgeted, because they're out of different line items in the budget. So we budgeted $1,670,000, so we came in way under budget on this. So the stalling, or the thing, I think might have saved us money. I'm just glad we didn't have an emergency in the meantime. So if, once this contract's awarded, I've talked to the company that's doing this, they're pretty, sound like real good people to work with, and by waiting, we're gonna, it's going to take quite a bit of time to order the tanks and build them. But they're going to start some, as soon as the contract's awarded, they're going to start doing some of the work, getting it prepped and all that. So I would say we're, once we get under construction, we could be about 10 months out.
Okay. So Jerry, can you repeat those, the gallons again?
The tanks that we're getting is two 12,000-gallon diesel tanks, so 24,000 gallons of diesel full, and, sorry, reversed, two 12,000 gallons of gas. So 24,000 gallons of gas and 12,000 gallons of diesel. And we worked with Canby Fire, Canby Police, Canby Utility on what they all burn and all that stuff, and kind of Counselor Davis was a big part of this when, through Canby Fire, on helping us figure it out. So that the amount of fuel we have, the fuel will be used and not go bad. So we'll be rotating through fuel with all of that, so.
So this, will this be a primary fuel source for these fleets, or just in emergency use only?
I believe that it's going to be a primary fuel source for Canby Fire, Public Works, wastewater, all the Public Works, and Canby Utility, and Canby Police Department.
Okay. But the primary piece is that it'll be ready to go in case there's...
Yeah.
An ice storm like we had a couple of years ago.
Yep, and then we actually left room to bring another diesel tank in in the future if, say, Canby Transit got on board, or we grew, or whatever, if we did that, to keep that. If we decided we needed more diesel fuel or gas, we could add another tank of each. We have the capacity to do that there. So it would be easy to tag, add to the project later.
Well, I can't express enough thanks for, I know this is a little bit of a long-term budgeting arc to get here, but I know the troubles that we had with the, the big ice storm that we had a couple of years ago, where we were, we were on our trucks and Canby Utility trucks and PG trucks were all on fumes as they were operating. And so this was a big commitment by the council to get to this point, to be able to have this. So it's a big investment, but I believe it is an investment in public safety. So I really do appreciate staying with this and getting it to this point. So be anxious to see this get built. Any other comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Patton.
So you said that Canby Fire and other agencies will have access to this fuel. Will they be paying for their portion of the fuel, or is the city now going to be subsidizing the fuel for all these different agencies?
No, I, we, we're going to charge them for fuel, and I'm going to kind of maybe work with them, other entities that didn't chip in on this, to maybe see what they'd be willing to pay a little bit more for gallons to help with maintenance of the fuel station. So I don't see that as being a problem. I think the savings that they're going to have, they're going to be more willing to do. I know Canby Fire is going to be excited to have this, same with Canby Utility.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we're going to recoup our costs from the other deals. Another nice thing about this, Counselor Patton, is that if we had any kind of emergency, we can issue fuel cards and track and recover our costs. Like during the ice storm, we were just trying to keep stuff going and paying. At the end of the day, we can recoup our, in an event, our costs to each department.
Okay. One last thing. So it was brought up in the Street Maintenance Task Force about the fact that the city does not pay, compared to the fire department and other districts, they don't pay the street maintenance fee, but because they've all been going down to Pacific Pride, they've essentially been paying the gas tax.
Yep.
By doing this, now all these agencies will not be paid into the gas tax. Is it possible, I guess I would throw out as a consideration, if the city is going to be saving a fair amount of money on purchasing this fuel in bulk, that there may be some sort of, either a percentage or some sort of amount of what the savings is that could be kicked in annually to subsidize what is essentially going to be lost on the city's side of thing as far as that gas tax?
Well, and I believe that we will still be paying the gas tax.
Oh, when you buy in bulk, you still pay the gas tax?
Yeah, that'll still be there. We just save...
I guess I should have led with that question instead of that.
Yeah. But yeah, I think what we do is how we operate this later, when we get the card lock going, is another discussion I kind of had with Eileen on how we work this arrangement, and she can work with you guys on how we want to do this, if we want to charge a little extra to pay for it or whatever. That's kind of, right now, I'm just gonna, we're just gonna set it up so we bill each entity what we get and tell them something said there. But, but yeah, we will still be paying gas tax.
Okay. It just, it just popped in my head because, you know, we have a very long-term goal of using that money to update all of the ADA intersections. And if all of a sudden there was to be a drop in that as costs continue to arrive, increase over the years, it's essentially, that is just going to take that much longer to do all of that. So I, that is good. Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just really happy to be coming up here with some projects coming under budget finally.
Yeah.
And that's a big, substantial. We've actually...
We appreciate that.
Yeah, you know, we actually worked with Planning Department, and they've had me dress up the place a little. We planted some trees down there, so we're starting that. And we actually have this in two phases. In the second phase, we're going to come in and do a bunch more to hide this, you know, from the field. We planted the Leland Cypresses out there you can see to block that. We tucked the fuel station back, or the tanks back up against the Public Works warehouse so they're not ISOers. And then when we get this done, I'll probably be getting a consultant to put together to finish paving, putting our lighting, street lighting, flower, all the landscape stuff to finish the front. If you guys have been down to Public Works, it's blacktop and gravel. And so we want to get that kind of up to the standards. So that'll be, when we get this done, I'll be coming and seeing you for that.
Any other questions for staff? No?
Okay. Mr. Mayor, are you ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion, sir.
I actually did have a question.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Maldonado.
Jerry, can you give me those tank sizes again, please?
There's two 12,000-gallon gas tanks and one 12,000 diesel tank. Oh, the other thing, I forgot to add, you guys, there'll be a 350-gallon heated DEF tank there, if you guys know what DEF is for the diesels. Right now, it's a challenge because you got to get it, hand pump it in, the fire engines and everything that run on that DEF additive, it'll be on there with a card lock. So, so I forgot to add that, Counselor Maldonado.
Okay. Also, in the event of an ice storm or what have you, are these running in their own independent supply, electricity for the pumps?
It's ran off of the Public Works generator.
Okay.
So everything down there is powered now by generator.
Okay. And in the case that we do have some sort of a national, a natural disaster emergency or whatnot, how long would we expect for the usage to last?
With, when we hit our lowest point, we're going to order fuel at 10,000 gallons at a time, so 5,000 and 5,000, when we drop that, we have three months of operating time.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, three months is what we figured if we just use it for all of emergency use.
Okay. So we would be expected to have plenty in the case of an emergency?
The other thing is too, we still have the other bulk tanks that we have that are, we can move around, so those could be stationed at other places when we get this stationed, and those have fuel in them, so.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Waterman, did you have anything?
I do none.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance number 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Ming Hanan Construction, Inc., in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of a new City of Canby fuel station to, second reading on February 5th, 2025.
Motion has been made by Counselor Davis and the second by Counselor President Hensley to approve ordinance 1639, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Ming Hanan Construction Incorporated in the amount of $1,135,210 for the construction of the Public Works Fuel Card Lock Station project to a second reading on February 5th, 2025. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Anyone opposed? That carries 6-0.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah, Jerry, thank you very much. Item B tonight is considering ordinance 1640, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Mo Reader Computer Consulting, LLC, to provide specialized IT services for the city of Canby, sorry, City of Canby Police Department, and to a second reading on February 5th. Mr. Wood?
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. Todd Wood, Transit Fleet IT Director. Just to give you a little bit of background, when we originally lost our IT folks and we had to go out for temporary folks, we also hired a temporary individual for the police department to provide just 10 hours a week service, because the police department has a lot of specialized equipment, and their officers are out everywhere. And they've had that contract for a while. My original intent was that that contract would end in December, but after speaking with the police chief and looking over some of the special needs, the police department, and talking with Polar a little bit, and it is something Polar could technically handle, but the, because of the unique way the police move, work, so they're out all over the place, they've got some special and unique needs, it was determined that it would be beneficial for the police department to keep up this relationship. They have a very close relationship with this individual, and it works out well for the type of work they do. And Polar said it is something they could staff up to handle, but, but they requested that we continue this relationship. Now, procurement law doesn't allow me to do that without coming to council and getting an actual contract in place, because I'm past the point that I can continue to just sign an additional agreement. So I needed to get something a little more robust, so he presented us a three-year contract. I then had to go out, well, I had Ellie, my coordinator, go out and call as many places and be willing to submit a bid, because we're under 250,000, doesn't require anything formal, it just requires people to submit bids. She gave me a couple that were comparable, and he still came out the best price, which is good, because that's the individual they wanted to continue to work with him. So this is a three-year contract. It's only about 10 hours a week that he works with them. Polar still handles most of the infrastructure at IT. He handles, and I can't tell you personally exactly what he handles, the police chief might be able to give you a little bit better idea, but they are interested in continuing this relationship, and we want to support them, because they're out there doing a lot of, a lot of work for us, so we want to make sure they have what they're needing. So that is what this contract intends to do. It's only about $47,000 a year, so it's not super expensive. I mean, it's expensive, but as far as IT goes, it's not outrageous.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Counselor Davis?
Todd, did, was this, when we put out the IT contract?
Yeah.
Was this included in that proposal when the contractors bid it?
Yes. Originally, yes.
Originally, so...
Police Department was a part of the original bid.
Okay. So the police department was there with the intention that this would end in December? Okay, so this is over and above what that proposal was?
Correct.
Okay. Can we do that? That's a question for the city administrator, because we bid a proposal out, including this, in the contract, and now we're adding to that proposal.
Well, we're not adding to that proposal, because this, this is now a separate contract for separate services. Well, I mean, some of the same services, but it's now a separate contract. That's under...
Okay, and the second question, was this budgeted for, what was the original budget?
The original budget was Polar's budget. I budgeted through December. So I have the budget through December. There's enough money to cover it, but it wasn't originally budgeted for.
Okay, so it wasn't budgeted for?
Correct.
Okay.
If I could add something here, so this was my request to continue services with Tyler Mo Reader. We, like Todd said earlier, were pretty unique. We have a lot...
Mo Reader. We, like Todd said earlier, we're pretty unique. We have a lot of data systems and softwares that's different than most IT stuff. Tyler Mo Reader is familiar with our stuff. He's worked with us now, what, almost a couple of years now. He also does the same service for the City of Oregon City. So he knows our system. He knows it really well. I think Councilor Waterman could attest that we are needy at the department, at the police department, because we have unique systems that aren't normal and we're emergency services. So we, we need it when we need it. We want it quick and we want it done, done fast. And Tyler knows how to fix things very quickly because he's familiar with our system since he does it in Oregon City and, and for us. And so this was a little bit above and beyond kind of what Polar does, but I felt we really needed it and we needed to extend his contract. One thing that's unique about Tyler, too, is that he, it's 10 hours a week, but if he, if he's in and he, it's a couple hours of work and he's done, he's done and he doesn't charge us for those couple hours. So 47,000 is the max amount. And the other thing is he's on call, he lives in Canby. So if we need him in the middle of the night, which sometimes happens, he is, he is right there for us to fix those things. So.
I still, I have no doubt that that's needed, Chief, but, you know, the, I go back to the question of the budget. Is this coming out of the police department budget then?
Ultimately, it'll be charged through the police department, through the IT internal services to the police department.
Correct.
Okay, and did you budget for it?
I did not budget for it, but we'll try to make, make it work. Yes.
Okay.
So it wasn't budgeted out of last, from last year, we just did six months.
The IT department budgeted for the first six months. And right now, Mo Reader is blended in with all the rest of the city. So the city each pays per PC, so it's a blend in there. So that will go away, which it technically already has, and will instead be charged directly to the police department through internal services.
Okay, so is the contractor who's doing the city IT willing to back off the 47,000 since they don't have to do the work?
No, because that's the contract they agreed to. So we are going to back them off of that. They're, like I said, they are capable, but this was a direct request for this service.
Okay.
Councilor Patton, and then I'm coming to you to counsel President Hensley.
So just to make sure I'm digesting this correctly, Polar Systems has the ability to do the work ultimately, like when you say, we need these things done?
Yeah.
They have the ability, they have the capability to do this thing?
Yes.
Okay. You had made a, a rough comment that, you know, for them to provide the services at the level that the police department would like, which is 24 hours on call, all those sort of things, being able to, to come in at any point in time, that may require them to staff?
No, they're already staffed up. So there's, so here's the difference. Here's one of the major differences. Polar is a huge, why is she huge? It's 30-plus people, right? So when you call their after-hours number, it goes into a system, that system pages somebody who's on call. It takes them a little bit to figure out what's going on, and then they try and have to come into town to deal with this.
Sure.
And you don't know who you're going to get because they're a larger organization. I mean, that's one of the benefits to them is they have, you know, 20 some odd techs that are doing this. The benefit to Tyler is he lives here, he knows the system, he doesn't have to troubleshoot or, or try to figure things out as, and Polar is perfectly capable of doing that and figuring it out, whereas Tyler can pick up the phone, get in his car, be in a police car in, you know, minutes or whatever. And since he has this background, he can easily get them back up and running at a much faster pace. So some of it is that. Yeah.
Okay.
I hope that explains it.
Yes, so essentially, this additional amount is more or less a request from Canby Police because they prefer to work with this individual and like the way they provide the current services they're getting. It's not because Polar is unable to provide these services.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's a fair assessment. And to be fair to PD, you know, when you're out there and you've got stuff going on and your equipment isn't working and you pick up the phone, it's nice to know who's showing up.
Sure.
And Polar can't make that guarantee, right? They're going to send a tech.
Yeah.
You may not know who that is.
Okay, so next question is, and I think Councilor Davis was alluding to this, because this person is now doing this work, essentially some of, it sounds like some of the work that Polar is doing during the day on the police system will essentially, they will not do that anymore. This person will do all of that work, or Polar will still do their stuff during the day. This person is just going to be doing specialty stuff in an emergency.
That's correct. But not just in an emergency, but, but yes, Polar is still working with the police department. The police are still calling Polar for things. They're still stepping in. They still handle all of Polar's servers. Tyler doesn't deal with, or all of PD's servers. Tyler doesn't deal with the servers. So they deal with the servers. Polar deals with the Wi-Fi system. Tyler will tell Polar, we're not, see, just compliant on the Wi-Fi system, and Polar will figure out, install and set up the Wi-Fi system. So, so they're still doing all that technical work on that side. So this is just a little bit extra on the top for the police department to give them services they, they need, and that little bit of, some of it, a little bit of it psychological.
Sure.
So.
So my last part piece of this is, is it possible for, so this, we, we have a three-year contract?
Yeah.
Before the next time we go out to bid with Polar?
Yeah.
This contract that you're talking about is going to come up annually or is for three years?
This is a, this is a three-year contract.
To go, to kind of coincide with them?
Yeah, it can be, it can be terminated anytime.
Sure, sure, sure.
I just, due to procurement law, trying to have to, you know, I'm trying to make my life a little bit easier rather than have to go, because I have to go out and get bids every time, right?
Yes. So, so my, where I'm, where I'm trying to get to here is, is it possible over the next three years, while these two are running parallel, if we approve it tonight, that the Canby PD, or something could be worked out between Canby PD and Polar, to have a either more permanent recognizable person as far as they have on staff, or one or two people that could be specifically signed for something like this so that Canby PD can become more, more comfortable with interacting with one of these IT companies and, and vice versa. So that way, when this contract comes up again, maybe, you know, we won't have to have two separate contracts. It could, it could get folded in with, by the time we have to do this again.
We could, we could do that now. I mean, technically, again, Polar is perfectly capable. I don't, I can't tell you whether or not I can guarantee that Polar can guarantee an individual will be dedicated to that. I could ask them. But the, that's not the way they bid the contract.
Well, yeah, I understand that.
Based on their bench of people, right?
That, that's why, that's why I'm saying that if in, if we work, if we work through this over the next three years, and then a contract goes, the bid goes out the next time, that could be one of the requirements, right?
Sure.
Is that the Canby PD has specific needs that they need, and we need to have two, possibly three people at whatever company put in the bid that are dedicated, that the police, the PD can contact any one of those three people, and they're going to, they're going to show up?
It can be built into in our.
Okay.
It's possible.
That would be, if I approved this, that would be something that I would want to see. I don't want to have us have two different contracts.
Sure.
We should not have to do that. If, if we are paying for an IT service, the IT service should be able to provide the city with all the IT that they need. If there's an emergency or something like that, we got to get a separate contract because, you know, for some reason all the computers decided they were going to explode in one day, then that's a special thing. But this is something that should just be taken care of.
Polar can do that.
No, I understand.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's clear.
No, I get it.
Okay.
It's just, this is a comfort thing for the PD.
Sure.
I want to make sure that they are happy for the next three years, which I'm totally fine with, but I would prefer this not to be a thing.
Understood. It is a little bit of a comfort thing, but it's also an efficiency thing.
Sure.
And it's a knowledge thing. My time knows our system, right? It would take some time for Polar to, to learn that. And it's something that, someone that we could constantly rely on, right, that knows our stuff. And it changes.
Yeah.
And, and it's mainly, it's not the server stuff. It is mainly our data system with the 29 laptop computers that we have issued to our officer. So it's, it's pretty unique.
And, and to be clear again, I, I'm up against a, a procurement law, right? So, so Tyler technically is still needed because Polar is, they're doing a great job onboarding. They've got a lot of computers replaced, but their unique systems are not something they are fully versed in at this point. And I need to continue him for at least a little while regardless. So I, so I, again, I'd like to make my life a little bit easier and not have to do this again. We can terminate this earlier than three years. It's not a, I have to go three years, but, so I don't have to sit back in front of you anytime soon. That's what, that's, that's why I did it three years.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm trying to emphasize is that I am not going to stand in the way of doing this.
Sure.
I think it makes total sense, but in three years, if we come back to this and it's like, oh, we're going to have two different contracts, then I'm going to put up a fuss.
Understood.
So I'm trying to make sure you know, because I'm going to be here for four years unless something, unless someone runs over me with a bus or something like that.
Oh, and now you're talking to the bus guy.
So in three years, I'm going to be sitting up here and be like, hey, we had that conversation. Why are there two different contracts? That's what I'm trying to, to emphasize here.
And one other thing I'll add is with Tyler, right, he has been training them up on certain things.
Perfect.
Right? So, and Tyler will be the first one to tell me, he's like, hey, my job is done here. Polar, and Polar got it down, and, and they could figure these, right? Tyler is, is right up.
Okay.
Yes, sorry, Ms. Attorney.
Thanks. Sorry, didn't want to cut anyone off. So your hesitation is now that you're bumping up into the, you can't amend the contract price any further.
Yeah, I, I don't want to act like I'm an expert in anything, but I've been explained by the finance director that we get into something called stitching.
Yes, you amend over the threshold that was permitted for the process before.
Yes.
Um, I would, I don't want to recreate the wheel here or add an 11th hour complication, but we, if we are uncomfortable with the three-year term and the price of the contract that could result from a three-year term, there is an option that we could look into as a sole source procurement instead that would allow us to do a new agreement without such a term and such a cost. There, there are a couple of things that we could do on the contracting sphere if, if we need to.
I know, I know we amended it last time. David had us amend it.
Yeah, I saw those emails.
Yeah, but I was, again, just trying not to get us into any procurement problem where somebody goes, you keep doing this and you start getting into this.
Yeah.
Stitching territory.
Agree. It gets hairy really fast. But if, if council's interested, that's an option we could look to into as well.
Council President Hensley?
Thank you. Actually, I would like to hear more about that. And the contract does say up to three years then? We're not locked into three years?
I believe so. I'll double check, but, yeah.
I, I don't want to debate the merits of Tyler's abilities to serve the PD. I'm, I'm sure that he's doing a great job. You gave him a glowing recommendation. I get that. I'm just, my, my concern is we're being told that Polar can do the job. We're already paying Polar. This other contract is essentially the luxury of convenience, and I'm just wondering where the money's coming from in the budget, because it's not budgeted for. That's a concern for me.
IT does have enough money to cover it right now for the next six months. But yes, it'll have to go into somebody's budget if it continues into next year.
Okay.
But I'm told, I'm told they're rich and they have tons of cash.
If we continue this, we would put it in our. Okay, because I think that's, that's the undertone that I'm sensing is that we contracted and we have budgeted for services with Polar, and now we did budget enough for extra PD services, which ended in December.
Correct.
But there is still enough budget-wise in the IT budget.
We'll have to shift some cash around, but the IT budget can.
To sustain for the rest of the year, then when we get into the budget cycle for '25, '26, if this is a, a IT piece that we want to continue, then that's got to fall somewhere in someone's bucket of gold that we don't have, right? But.
Aren't we going to have a supplemental budget for this then?
No, it doesn't sound like, no, because it's already, it's in the budget for this year. They're just saying that going forward.
He's not, he's not here, but I defer to the finance director as far as whether or not a supplemental is needed. There's certain monies that can be moved without one and certain monies that can be moved, cannot be moved.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, I, I don't have an answer to that. I, I don't know enough about supplementals to know whether or not we'll have to, some of it's in a, locked in some lower categories that we may have to require supplemental to move them out. And that's, that's finance law I don't understand.
But that's all within the IT?
This is why I'm in transit.
But I'm.
Is that all within the IT budget?
Correct.
Right.
That's what I'm hearing is that there's money this fiscal year without having to do anything supplemental. The question is, what do we do next fiscal year? And that will come up during the budget.
The budget process. Okay.
Yes.
Councilor Davis? Mr. Mayor, I would like to, to go back to the city attorney's recommendation because I'm real concerned that we're not doing this legally and to go to a separate agreement on this and not to exceed six months because I'm not going to pre-authorize an amount in the police department's budget before we get into the budget process. I don't think that that's right. And so I think that we should go to the separate agreement that the city attorney to make sure that this is legal, or at least give the city attorney an opportunity to review the last contract and make sure that this is legal.
Okay. I don't think it's a question of legality. It's more just continuity and smoothness and keeping best practices.
Yeah, it's also to avoid getting us in any procurement trouble at two weeks. So there's a way to not, if there's a, if there's a way to do this without getting itself, I'm fine with that. I'm just trying to keep us out of any, you know, budget trouble.
Councilor Waterman, did you have your hand up?
I did. It was just before we got this, I was just going to just make, reiterate the comment that this isn't an unusual type of situation as even Oregon City currently does this as well. They have their own IT as well with a specialized police department support.
Okay. Councilor Sterns?
I just want to reiterate what I think I've heard, but maybe I didn't. Maybe that's what I want to hear. So we, so this guy's been doing IT for the police for, for a while, right? Correct?
Yeah.
We recently hired Polar to, in essence, eventually take over this guy's job amongst all the other things he's going to do. However, like any, any new service, there's transition time. You wouldn't expect anybody to immediately take over, or at least it might be difficult. So you're saying that right now, if this guy were to stop working, it would cause some hardship?
It would cause some hardship for the PD. I, and.
And I, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand.
You can blame a little bit of this on, on me because I thought Polar could be up to speed in the PD within six months. And it turns out our, our city itself needed more work than even I was aware. We have, you know, 60-plus PCs that are well out of date and have to be updated. I know Paul had started all this process before he left. We have some servers that need to be updated. So they've been spending most of their time on that and trying to get things working on those rooms. They do a fantastic job, by the way. So, but they haven't got themselves up to the, up to the level that they really need to be, to take this over.
So this is, in essence, a transition cost?
Yeah.
And so you, and right now, your expectation is it wouldn't last for three years? It's more of a?
It, it, it's unlikely, but, yeah.
So, so I kind of agree that, that we probably shouldn't be making a three-year commitment for something.
Sure.
We don't think will go for three years and we hope it won't go.
Well, it sounds like there's maybe a better way to do this, which would be great than keep us out of, again, my goal is just to keep us out of procurement trouble. So that we, we can continue to support them. Because, you know, I don't want their support to lapse.
Oh, for sure.
Some of us can live without support. This is not one of the departments.
Councilor Patton, comment?
So it sounds like to me where I think Councilor Davis and others are going is maybe do like this sole source agreement for the next, for the remainder of the, the next, like, whatever months. And then later on, once we do the budgeting process, then essentially budget for a three-year contract, what a three-year contract would look like, then put that into the budget for the next year, and then that would be a completely different ordinance.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's sounding like there, there might be a way to keep it going for a while until it ends, or?
Probably. And this is the part where I'll say, I will, if you direct me to do this, I will get one of the public contracting specialists at my firm onto it. But we have, we have room to, to do something other than this, I believe, without dropping services and to get you a transition period.
That's the important thing. That's the most important thing here.
Okay, so then I guess, I, I guess I'd like, can I move to table ordinance 1640 for, for a future meeting?
You could, but let me get Councilor.
Do you want me to do that?
No, let me get Councilor Maldonado's question. And then, yes, I will let you make a motion to table it for future conversation.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that I'm gathering it correctly as well. We want to keep Tyler around for another six months to train Polar, correct?
Essentially.
Essentially?
To provide the, more accurately, to provide the. To provide the, more accurately, to provide the Police Department extended support.
Okay.
I can't guarantee you that Polar will be able to, ready to take it over in six months, it's possible.
Okay.
Because again, I thought they could, I thought they could do it in six months now, clearly that, that was not the case, so, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so essentially what we're, what we're looking at is keeping Polar on, but we need to figure out the, the learning process of our systems, and how long, how much longer that's going to look like. And now is Tyler the only one that's able to actually help them learn our system?
Yeah, he's the only one that has the knowledge of the system.
Okay.
I mean, I guess Paul could do it, no.
Okay, I would, I would actually agree with Counselor Davis on this then. I would, I would like to see what it would take to renegotiate some sort of terms on this, and without getting ourselves into any kind of hot water.
Okay, sorry, Chief Trow, and then Counsel Waterman.
Joe, just to add something, and I think if Emily could look at the contract, but I believe this contract is basically for up to three years, and we could end it at six months, if I'm not mistaken. So it is just, it's not a solid contract for three years, but it's up to three years of, of paying him for these services. So if it's six months, we don't have the money, or it's not budgeted, right, and we have to transition to Polar, so we, I think we could do that, but I would, I would defer to Emily to look at that contract.
Right.
But I believe, I believe that's in there, it's written that way.
I believe both of our contracts have a termination.
Yeah, but it's for a term of three years, but you do have language in here that will allow either party to terminate upon 30 days' notice to the other.
With that same aspect, are we allowed at any point to consider renegotiations of it?
Tyler's contract?
The Polar.
That one's, that one's more challenging, because now we went through an RFP contract, we made an agreement for a specific amount of money per month over a three-year period, so.
I think that also included specific, specific services, correct?
Yeah, I mean, the Police Department was included in the RFP, they were a part of the original RFP, yeah.
Okay.
Counsel Waterman?
Yeah, so I'm, just to understand, so Polar is still doing the general IT work for the Police Department, correct?
That's correct.
So Tyler is only for the very specific systems that the Police Department utilizes, that's not normal that the everyday average company or firm would, would have, would have knowledge of or experience in, is that correct?
For, for the most part, I mean, there, he is a very good tech, so if there is a fix that, and he just happens to be around, rather than send it to Polar, he'll just take care of it, let Polar know he had done it, type thing, so. He's done some general work as well, but for the most part, that is his purpose, yes.
Counsel Pegg, did you have something else?
I guess just two more things.
Number one.
Number one, the, in, in having this conversation, and now chatting with Emily about this, right, I did get your name right, right?
You did.
Okay. Was this contract, was all of this run through you before tonight?
Not this particular iteration, my office did vet the amendment to the original contract back, that extended the term from July to December.
Yeah, it's, it's the same contract that David originally wrote for us, we just changed the terms, the dates on it, so.
Okay, then I guess I would move to table ordinance number 1640 to a future council meeting after legal reviews this.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Counsel, Counselor Pegg. I was, sorry, I was distracted by Chief Trow giving me the index, hold on, and then second by Counselor Davis to table said conversation for, for their work in construction by staff and our attorney. Discussion, yes, Chief Trow?
Just a question, so I just want to make sure we're able to continue to use Tyler in this fashion until that time, right?
Technically, his contract is expired.
When does it expire?
December, December 30th.
What's today, 20, 20 some odd days ago? It expired on the 31st, it just...
Of, of January, of December?
December, yes. But there, that's, there is room...
There's wiggle room.
There's wiggle room.
I think we got plenty of wiggle room.
Okay, well, that's the question, is how much room do we have, right, I don't know, that, yeah, that's...
She's going to know the wiggle room, she's going to get back to us.
I know we have wiggle room right now.
We'll get it figured out.
But the question is, how, how long is it, because we don't want to lose this, you know, we don't want to, this to go on too long, because that...
No, we don't either, I think she'll...
Sounds like you have a good relationship with this contractor, but we will move with haste.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll be good.
And I would assume that the conversation you have heard us have up here would lead you to believe that we're not opposed to doing this?
No, no.
We just would like to see this done a different way, so if he's like...
No, and I'm, again, I'm happy to do it a different way, my goal here is just to keep us out of procurement trouble, that's, you know, that's, that's my only goal, and to make sure the Police Department's happy, so those are, those are the, the two things I'm looking for.
Thanks for bringing that to us, Todd.
Yeah, thanks, Todd.
Yeah.
So, any other discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
All right, so we will table it, and we'll let Emily and her team work its magic. Gentlemen?
Cool.
Thank you very much. Before we move on to item C, I did see Chief Dale sneak in, if, Chief Dale, if you'd like to come up and give us the wilderness fire preparedness, that'd be great.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Council.
How are you, Chief Dale?
Really good. I see you travel with your own fire expert.
I, I try to.
Yes.
Now that he's retired, he needs something to do, so, you know, I try to tap into that as much as, well, in, nothing, I will, I'll, I'll tell you next time we have coffee.
Thanks for having me tonight, I know the mayor and council requested that I give a wildfire preparedness for Canby briefing in response or in relativity to the LA fires, and the concern that they were not prepared in LA, as, and I'm here to assure you that we are prepared, and I'll go over the reasons that make us so prepared. I brought a lo-fi PowerPoint presentation, I just came from my board meeting tonight, and I put this together, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to see this on the camera, but I'll explain it as we go. We have a, first off, Canby has a well-funded, financially stable fire district with well-trained and skilled personnel. The last levy increase that we passed in this community opened the Northside Fire Station, and with the sunset of the urban renewal district, we'll be able to hire the remaining people to increase staffing even more. All levels of our local and state governments are now more prepared than ever since the 2020 wildfires, as is the public, from what we all experienced and went through. Locally in Canby, the leaders of our agencies meet and work together on a regular basis, we communicate frequently, and I know, because of this, I know Canby Utility specifically has a wildfire risk plan filed with the Public Utilities Commission, they do that annually. Our Canby Fire Division Chief, Matt English, he participated in the updated Clackamas County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, this was, is, I brought the front page, it's of a 258-page document that was updated and finalized in July of 2024. This was directly from the lessons learned during the 2020 wildfires, and so we've learned a lot, and we're, we've put that into our plan, and we practiced that plan. So Chief English from Canby Fire was part of developing this. What we need in our community is help from the public now, okay? So this is a graphic on how to prepare your home for defensive space, to protect it, have the best chances of protecting it from a wild wildfire. This is a graphic on emergency preparedness for kits for emergencies and being prepared in your own home, whether it be to shelter in place or evacuate. And finally, this is a graphic on public alerts, and we urge the public to go onto our website and follow the link to the county and sign up for a public alerts. What this does is you are allowed to put your phone number in there, especially if you don't have a home phone, and be alerted for items like reverse 911 and evacuations that would be ordered by the Fire Department or the city. It allows us to communicate, whether you're home or not, you can get this alert at your cell phone. All of these are on our website, canbyfire.org, and you can find a link to all that information that I just presented here, whether you can see it at home on, on the video or not. And in conclusion, I assure you that Canby is more prepared than ever. LA, as I understand it, was in the midst of doing a community wildfire protection plan this year, so we, ours is done, and I would entertain any questions, or the council or mayor has.
Well, I do know too that we also did the, several months ago, did an update and look at the overall safety plan for the city, and that's still kind of going through its steps in...
Emergency management plan.
Thank you, the emergency management plan. The other piece too, I think, learning from our, the wildfires that we had here in Clackamas County, but also I know the state learned a lot too with Detroit Lake and what unfortunately happened there, and I know that we, the Oregon Mayors Association have had a number of workshops in terms of preparedness for that and whatnot, and I commend Canby Fire, you, Chief Dale, and former Chief Davis on making sure that we are prepared and whatnot. In fact, it's interesting, the other day, Canby Utility was out on the fire hydrant in the front of my house, testing that and running gallons of water through that, so, I don't know if that's just, it's standard maintenance piece or whatnot, but we are, you know, we, multifaceted approach on keeping up on these things, so I do appreciate you coming in and giving that piece. Counsel, Counsel Davis, and then Counsel Sterns, can you talk tonight?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Dale. Anyway, I, I just, you know, the other part is that with Chief Dale's experience, he was the incident commander this last summer up on South End Road, and that incident was without water supply, and we were able to control an out-of-control wildland fire on South End Road, and that's the second one that we've had up in that area, so that speaks very highly with not only Canby Fire, but our Clackamas County partners from the Clackamas County Fire Defense Board, as well as state mobilization. So we can, we can mobilize units from throughout the state very rapidly through a mobilization plan, so resources are pretty, pretty deep. Very unfortunate situation in Los Angeles, very unfortunate, but let's date back this a little bit, you can go back to the Great Chicago Fire, where many buildings were lost, and they're actually calling these urbanized and suburban fires, because if you look at Paradise, California, when Paradise burned, that actually landed out being a suburban, urban, out-of-control fire, rather than calling it a wildland fire, okay? Where you run into problems in a, in an urbanized fire like that is the fact that you've got, now got a huge fire load fanned by 80 mile an hour winds, and I don't know if any fire department is equipped to control that, that type of a, of a scenario. But as Chief Dale said, preparing your own property is very, very important, and I would also like the city to even look at some of our wildland interface areas potentially down off of Territorial Road in the park area down by Public Works, because if that area were to get going, it hasn't been cleaned out, and cleaning forest is extremely important, and undercarriage of forest is very, very important as well, but that hasn't been cleaned out. We could get a suburban fire into those townhomes and then spreading that way potentially without cleaning out that forest a little bit and trying to minimize those fuel loads, and that hasn't been done in the state of Oregon for years. And if we start concentrating our money and our funding in cleaning forest and the undercarriage throughout the state of Oregon, we might be able to minimize the amount of money that we're spending on suppressing these fires, because we're spending a lot of money on suppressing these fires potentially, that there is no need for those. But looking at lessons learned in down in California, they're just rebuilding Paradise the way it was before, you know, whereas you can look at Meridian, and that's where I talked to Don, Don Hardy into planning as we move forward with some of our planning on building safe communities, so that we learn from the lessons in California, and how they built down there versus the opportunity that we have on the Walnut Street Extension and some of those areas and stuff, because Meridian, Idaho actually has built separate residential areas, you have to have a break between residential areas, so that if that ever were to occur, you at least have a break created already, but it's already been built as a fire-safe community, you know, and we have a great opportunity right now through the planning process to be able to look at that and build in those safety factors so that we can learn from what California's experiencing.
Great, thank you, sir. Do you have something, Counsel Sterns?
Thank you, that, that expressed a lot of my thoughts as well. As somebody who, when I was a kid, used to fight, fight fires in a rural area, one of the things that I would be interested in doing is after the Los Angeles fire has had time to clean up, most likely there's going to be a post-mortem and say what happened, what could have happened, and why it was as bad as it was, and it would be nice to compare that with Canby, so I just remember when I was doing some of that, it seemed like no tragedy ever went, I always made a video about every single thing that could go wrong, and one of the things that concerns me a little bit, I mean, we're not in a big, as much of a fire danger as Southern California is, we don't have a lot of that same brush, but, you know, like you said, a big wind event, and pretty much, right, nothing you can do really if there's a huge wind event, and you know that, but I do see a lot of houses, when I look at it from my, because we used to, like I say, and you guys know better than me, that in Canby, that I know were probably the first to go up, because they're older, I think was that Philander Lee's house, the old one on, on Elm Street that's got pretty much blackberries growing right up into, you know, onto the house, and I look at those and I say, you know, that's, that's, that's going to produce a lot of sparks to go to other places, and also even the neighborhood I live at, if one of the houses goes up, they're close enough together that I'm sure there, there's a good chance that the other houses will be affected, so, and I'm not saying this as a criticism or anything, I'm just saying it's something to look at, because what happened in LA, no one expected it, but it happened, and the right combination of wind, and, you know, and so the same thing happened like in 2000, was it, you know, 21, when there was that huge east wind event, and, and I knew when that wind was going, there's nothing you can do, once the wind stopped, like, okay, and at that point, like, Canby's safe because the wind stopped, but you can't really control the wind.
Counsel Pegg?
Yeah, so I guess for me, you know, I've been watching all this unfold, and it really drives me crazy when things like this are politicized the way that they are, it's disgusting. I, the Canby Fire Department is fantastic, you guys are class act, but I dare say that if, in the summertime, and this is more for the community, if in the summertime we go three or four months without rain, and winds of 80 miles an hour whip up, and there is a grass fire on one end of town, there is no amount of preparedness that you as a fire department can have to not lose a substantial part... that you as a fire department can have to not lose a substantial part of this, possibly lose a substantial part of the city before that fire could get under control. And I think one thing that I constantly am hearing about are these fire hydrants running out of water. My question is, and I figured this was going to come up at some point in time, I dare say that you could not turn on every single fire hydrant in the city and still have the water system work. And there's no way to build the capacity into our water system to be able to run every single fire hydrant in it to try and put out these fires. So, I mean, we can, we can say that we can be prepared as much as we can for this, but these events, you cannot prepare them for. You can, you can try to, but the amount of apparatus, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the amount of apparatus and people and water and all of those things to try and combat something like that, you, it would, I dare say it would be hard to muster that before a large section of the city was, is lost. It just, it just, it's something that you just cannot prepare for. I agree that we need to look at ways of building defensible space when we do our building codes and stuff. But unfortunately, you know, it's all about density, right? You've got to, you've got to try and fit a certain number of people in a certain area you're building up, all these things. I mean, it's, it is, it is really unfortunate what has happened down there. And I personally, and, and people saying, oh, you know, we're prepared for this, and why didn't they do that, and so on and so forth, it just, it just does not make sense to me. And as far as your comment about forest management stuff, I've been in the horticulture industry for 20 years, here in Oregon. I have worked for many of those years with the forestry folks, and they have been underfunded for decades. And so when it comes to the forest fires in this area, it's not just mismanagement from the state of Oregon, it's mismanagement from the federal government, and it's also mismanagement from private landlords. Everybody has some blame to share in the fact that our forests have not been maintained over the years. There is the ability to fund those things, but it's not politically, it's not politically sexy. And so they don't want to do that stuff. They want to throw it under the bus and kick the can down the road. So, you know, I commend you for the work that you're doing and making sure that things are prepared, but I can tell you right now that if something like this were to break out, I will be the last person that's trying to skewer somebody for saying they weren't doing their job, because I know darn well that there's no way you can prepare for something like that. That's all I'm saying.
Council Maldonado, did you have something?
Actually, a couple of questions. How many total, and kind of leads on to Council Patton as well, I do understand, yes, you, we may not be able to be 100% prepared, but I believe we can get better prepared. How many total firefighters do we currently employ?
We have 22 firefighters.
And does that include volunteers as well?
No. We have, well, for combat volunteers, we have an additional 10.
And how many, what's our total water trucks that we have?
Trucks that hold water, carry water only, we have three.
So we have three water tanks, and how many combat-ready trucks do we have?
Oh, we have four fire trucks and two brush trucks.
All right, and I apologize, that, that was the gist of my questions. I appreciate it, thank you.
Council Davis?
Yeah, Chief Dale, how are the guys doing down in California?
We have Canby Fire, you have five firefighter personnel and two rigs. They've been mostly at the Palisades Fire. Yesterday, they were assigned to a new fire, I believe it was called Lilac Fire, and it was down east of Carlsbad, somewhere in the San Diego, north of San Diego area. And they're, they forecasted 5% relative humidity for that work shift, and they are doing great. I think what's going to have to change is the weather pattern before we start seeing them come home or seeing crews released. So they're doing good, they're healthy, equipment's working well. I would like to say, Council Sterns and Council Patton, you are correct. If everybody in this town called 911 for a medical call all at the same time, we'd have to pick a few, and we, that's it. There's only so much, as Chief, as Councilor Davis said, that we can, one fire department can manage. That's why I emphasize personal preparedness, defensive space. It gives us the time we need to save homes. When, when homes are covered with brush and trees, it's, it's, there's too much work, and we have to go to the next house. So if everybody does their, their part, we could manage this ourselves. I, I feel very confident, working with our, the city and our neighbors, our partners like Canby Utility, that we have the resources, whether it be in this plan or locally, that we can, we can make a good effort and, and stop fire from impacting our community.
Well, and if I may, I think the other thing to emphasize is that when, when the fire department or the police department or county officials say you need to evacuate and you need to get out, you get out. You don't dink us around, you don't break out your hose and try and hose your house down, you get out of the way. Because that's how people get hurt, and that's how the fire, firemen and the police officers and the people who are trying to do their job then have to screw around and try and make sure you don't get killed. And then it takes them off from doing the work that they're doing to try and save a community. That to me is one of the biggest things that I just, that drives me crazy when I see these things. Pay attention to what's going on, get out, and then once you've been told to get out, stay out. Don't come back in, don't complain that you can't get into your house because you want to see what's going on, because that's how the looters get in there and stuff. You folks are the experts, and people need to get off of their armchair quarterbacking and do what the officials are telling them to do, and go from there. That's the other big one for me.
Yes, Council Sterns?
Back to stuff that we can do. Obviously, we can't do anything if, if the worst happens, but there's, there's things we can do and make things better and that sort of thing. But I'm wondering if the city of Canby, the codes or something could be enforced, because I, like I say, it kind of winces whenever I see a roof that you have to get up with a weed eater to, to take the weeds off. And I've done that before, where I had a neighbor where I would help get the weeds off the roof that were, you know, so I'm just wondering, I mean, as far as practical things that we as a city council, we as a city can do, or like, and I, I don't know who owns that, the Philander Lee house, but, but obviously looking at that, that's, there's might be something, is there, I don't know if there's something that code enforcement can do about some of those, maybe the worst case, and then, because I know that makes it less safe for everybody, because something like that goes up and, in, in, you know, those embers are going to go everywhere, you know? So I'm just wondering if the city administrator or those can look into making some fire safe for city land and like, clearing out the, maybe the eco park, that's very overgrown up. If that were dry and windy, that's, I wouldn't want to be jogging in that park at that time. So I just.
Already making, I'm already making notes.
Okay, I just thought, because even though there's stuff that we can't control, there are some stuff that we can, we should probably work on that.
Yep.
Chief Dale, thank you, appreciate you coming in and helping us with that tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief Dale.
He's been a Chief Dale for a while.
I know.
But now he's the, he's the chief.
The chief.
The chief.
The chief.
It's like the Ohio State.
Oh, okay. Okay. Next on the agenda.
Next on the agenda is item C, Consider Resolution 1423, a resolution authorizing the extension of municipal sewer service to 2542 Southeast 13th Avenue, tax lot number E, sorry, 4IE030200, located outside the Canby City limits in pursuant to the Urban Growth Management Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Emma Porcolo, I'm an associate planner in the Planning Department. I am here tonight to discuss the proposed resolution 1423, to request connection to the house located at 2542 Southeast 13th Avenue. So as you can see here, we're discussing the home that is located directly next to Lampro Steel on 13th Avenue. It is directly in the edge, the, the exact southeast corner of town. The property is located not within city limits, but within our urban growth boundary. So the request, the septic system at the property has failed, and it sounds like it is in quite a dire situation. Thus, and the property is located within 300 feet of an existing city sewer line. Therefore, pursuant to state law, they are required to request connection to the city system, hence why we are here tonight in front of you all, because that is the city council's jurisdiction. The condition of the annexation, which we have been requesting of folks, and this property owner has agreed to, is that they're agreed to annex the property into city limits within two years of connection, and they will be signing agreement to that effect, which we have worked with Emily on the agreement that is included in the packet for tonight's agenda. The request is nearly identical to a sewer connection request that came to you all several months back in June of this past year for 267 South Walnut Street, directly next to Dragonberry. That property was also a home located in the industrial park with the failing sewer system with the agreement to annex, and was also located in the UGB, but not within the city. The property, or the, the connection will be similar to all other new connections in the city. They are required to pay sewer SDCs upon annexation, they are then required to pay the sewer bill once they connect, and then any, you know, fees associated with the annexation and so on are required of the property owner as well. And I'm here to answer any questions you all have.
Great, thank you very much. Is there any questions about this? Yes, Council Patton?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 1423, a resolution authorizing the extension of municipal sewer services to 2542 Southeast 13th Avenue, tax lot one, or four, 1E0300200, located outside the City of Canby limits pursuant to the Urban Growth Management Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby.
Second.
Motion has been made by Council Patton and second by Council Davis to approve Resolution 1423, a resolution authorizing the extension of municipal sewer service to 2542 Southeast 13th Avenue, tax lot number 4IE030200, located outside of the Canby City limits pursuant to the Urban Growth Management Agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Canby. Any further questions or discussion?
Question?
Questions, sir?
Jerry, do you see any problems with this?
Not at all, that's what I'm just looking to help him out later on, plans for that. No, this is a good thing.
Okay.
And we actually put the sewer in planning for this to happen.
Okay, thank you.
We wanted to start paying sewer bills.
Great. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is old business, the, so 2025 Legislative Priority Discussion, which I think with League of Oregon City Days coming up, or Cities Day at the Capitol next week, we did kind of take up our own legislative pieces. But then also, I think, I mean, and I both resent out the, what the League of Oregon Cities were taking as far as their action items, and so just kind of want to revisit that with the council in terms of if I, we go down, what is it, are we carrying the mantra of the League of Oregon City and/or what are the other items that we would want to press, press upon our elected officials?
Yes, so Council, on the, on the board is the 23 priorities that were decided by the League of Oregon Cities. Mayor Hodson and Council President Hensley whittled that list down to the top 10, and then through the, through your, your process, then you, we settled on the top five of those 10 that were fed into the League's survey process and came up with the League's top five legislative priorities. The interest in this, revisiting this was after, in December, after Mayor Hodson and I met with Representative Drazen, you all wanted to look at the list again and make sure that you were comfortable with the, presumably the top 23, the top 10, and any other legislative priorities that you wanted to make sure that Canby emphasized with Representative Drazen and the rest of the legislative delegation, in case it didn't end up in the top five. So the top five will be, you know, have already been incorporated with the League. They will be worked on specifically by the League's lobbying staff. But is there anything else that you wanted to make sure got emphasized from Canby's perspective?
What I just want to add to that too is, part of, majority of our conversation with Representative Drazen was really centered on our needs from an infrastructure standpoint, and a lot of that was around water with, also, I know Canby Utility is lobbying for the water project, water expansion that we're going to need as a city within the next 10 to 15 years, and then also our own needs at our water treatment facility and, and whatnot. So that was a big crux of our wish list, was to give to Representative Drazen, understand that, you know, though it may seem like nickels and dimes on a state level, to us, it's $5 and $10 bills that we're looking at in terms of what we need to do from a water treatment perspective. So that, she already has that information and knows where we are at and that need. And we are not the only city that is having those needs, there's, there are others that are having it, and it's quickly approaching for some that they will not be able to build anymore without expansion or development. So the state realizes it's a, it's a priority, so. Council Patton, did you have something anywhere?
No, I was itching my neck.
Oh, okay.
I mean, eventually, I'll say something.
Would you like, okay?
But Council Davis has his hand up.
Yeah.
Council Davis, did you have something?
So just a question on the marijuana tax? We don't have any marijuana establishments, do we?
No, we do not.
Not here, no.
Okay.
But it's the top, it's in the top 10 for the League.
It's in the top 10 for us.
For the League of Oregon Cities.
So is the top 10 ours or the League of Oregon?
Do we have the five we sent them? Do you have that?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're in the packet. If you go to page, on, on the PDF portion of the packet, page 271.
Okay.
It has the five, infrastructure funding, behavior health enhancements, restoration of recreational immunity, employment, land readiness and availability, and shift from gas tax to a road use fee.
Yeah, and that's what I was, that's what I'd be in favor of.
Yeah.
That, that.
That's what we're on.
Yep.
Yeah. That is, those five are the ones that we submitted to the League as part of its survey. I think my question was, is there anything else that you wanted to make sure that we emphasize that are unique to Canby? So.
Yes, Council Patton?
I guess for me, we're, and I, I fear that maybe my previous, my comment at the previous meeting or whatever has brought this up. I guess what I, what I envision is, and I, and I wish I was in town to be able to come, go down and do this, but like, when we say our, like, our number one from this larger group is like infrastructure funding, it's, it's things like the water treatment plant and that sort of stuff. And just make sure that when we're having conversations with the, with folks, that we're tying them to a specific project or need in the City of Canby, as far as like, you know, we have a street maintenance fee, we are doing our part with our citizens to subsidize what we have been shorted for years from the state and the feds, but we still need their support for some of that funding and, and those sort of things. And I guess the way I, the way I envision this is that this is sort of like a Shawshank Redemption sort of deal, where, you know, you send a letter when he wanted the library, so he just kept sending letters.
Right.
And then when he got the books, he sent two letters a day, we just keep pounding them. And eventually, you know, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease.
Sometimes.
And I prefer to have Canby be squeaky for all the right reasons, which is, you know, improving, making the livability of things for our citizens top priority.
Nope, that's, I can definitely do add that, that focus. And again, going back to our conversation with Representative Drazen was a lot, in fact, the whole conversation was mostly on our capital projects for water treatment. So, okay. All right. We'll march forward. Has anyone other than myself, I think, signed up to go? Are you going to be down there?
Well, I'm going to be down there every Thursday, but this is a Tuesday. I will probably be able to go if I can hitch a ride with you.
Okay. I think I can manage that.
Because when is it again?
Next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'll be there.
Okay.
That'll be fun.
Thank you. Appreciate that conversation.
It's like 16 degrees.
Item B under old business is the intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County for city-led homeless initiative.
Yeah, so this is going to end up being a, just a status report. Emily and I have been, well, mostly Emily has been heavily working on an intergovernmental agreement between the city and Clackamas County that would essentially give the city, the library, the police department and the Canby Center would give them funds to be able to operate homeless resource services, employment services, food, shelter, those kinds of things. And so this agreement is just about ready to go. It will be on the February 5th agenda, so.
Does this play into, again, we had some conversation last week, I think it was Chief Trow and yourself and Chief Dale and Mr. Keane from the Canby Center about just some of the, the need for?
It relates to that.
Okay.
Yeah, that conversation was more towards cold weather sheltering opportunities. This, this grant pays for projects and programs that are designed to assist people that are struggling and homeless families. So meals, education, those types of additional services.
Okay.
How much money is this grant?
Oh.
Can you give me a number?
Yeah, it's about $500,000.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ish?
Ish. Yeah. We will let you know.
Six figures beginning with a five.
Five hundred, $500,000-ish dollars over a period of three term years, which will end up being about two and a half years in practicality.
Eileen, could you check and see if the Canby Food, or the St. Patrick's Food Bank is tied in with the Canby Center on that? Because they're serving about 300, 200, I know last week we did about 220 families. And then we, the St. Patrick's Food Bank provides food over to the Canby Center. So would you just, could you check and see if they're included on that?
Happy to, yeah.
Yes, sir.
And maybe I kind of missed it, or it may have happened before I was on the council or something, but does the city have any kind of unified policy or plan for homelessness? Or is it just kind of throw some money at it ever, every so often? And I don't want to mean that in a crude way, but without me knowing what the plan is, I, I like to have some more directed than just throw money out till it goes away kind of thing, which that's probably won't happen if you, yeah.
No, we definitely do not have a throw money at it.
Well, but I'm saying, is there a, is there a particular set of goals and plans or strategies that, that the city may have developed or, and I'm not saying that, I'm not accusing you of doing that, I'm just saying.
Sure, no, I got you.
Somebody that may be listening or myself included saying, what is the plan? I mean, we get this pile of money, which is all good. We want to help homeless people, which is all good, but is there anything more concrete steps, things that we've decided to help out with the problem? One of the, one of the things you learn in economics 101 is if you want more of something, you subsidize it. That's why we subsidize electric cars, because we want more of them. But you have to be careful that how things are, are instructed.
Well, I, I do know, and since Chief Trow is here, not to pick on Chief Trow, it's more of a compliment, but I know that Canby PD does a really good job of, of building relationships with those that are in a truly homeless situation, homeless, houseless, depending on your choice of vernacular. And so at last update that I had from Chief Trow was, I think we're right around 10 to 15 people that are truly home, like homeless or houseless that either are.
Live on the streets kind of.
Yeah, that are living out in, you know, the, you know, using the blackberry bushes as sh- as cover and whatnot, or living kind of, kind of off the grid kind of piece. Our challenge is that we don't have county offices and county provides those services and we don't have any kind of county extension in that regard. So it really does fall to churches, Canby Center, Canby PD, Canby Fire. And I only point to you because you used to work there, but, and so those are their.
But is there, is there kind of some sort of document or plan that, that guides our approach to it? Or is that something that we could develop?
Well, right now that's really handled under the jurisdiction of Canby PD.
Okay, so Canby.
In partnership with Canby Fire.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we're talking about allocating money and resources to, to an issue that, that I'd just like to, curious about what the plan is.
Yeah, I think what these funds are for is, Eileen talked about, is trying to help those entities in our community that help with those services, but are not delineated or part of the county. So it's a, it's a, it's a funding source to help offset what the county can't do and what we as a city cannot do.
Yeah.
That was well put, Mayor. The Canby, we are so blessed in this community in regards to resources available to help people in need. And the Canby Center does an excellent job in regards to vetting those people that come in and ask for assistance. Canby Police Department, Canby Fire, we have the Dr. Richard Davies Fund, and so if there's an immediate need right away, police officers or firefighters can help those people out and get them into a motel room and things like that. But we depend very much so on the Canby Center to vet those who we encourage them to then go to the Canby Center and Ray Keane and his staff do an excellent job. Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to add was that, you know, this money and this, the intent of these funds are to purposely direct money into the rural communities of Clackamas County because the, there are other ways to pay for these services. And I'm thinking metro, regional government specifically. Through metro, the urban portions of Clackamas County are, are in a better position too. And, and frankly, they have more homeless people as well. But the rural communities, we're feeling like, hey, we've got some problems here. And so the purpose of this program is to channel monies into the rural communities. So Malala, Canby and Estacada and Sandy are all taking advantage of this funding opportunity.
Yeah, there's a, there's an organization, I think, that's based out of Estacada, but they also have kind of set up relationships with Malala and Sandy or it's anyways, and kind of have been working their way into Canby a little bit. It's called, it's called Ant Farm. Thank you. I wanted to say Alien Ant Farm, but that's the rock band.
It's a band.
But they help out those communities and even here in Canby, they have come in and helped with providing shelter in like cold weather and things like that here in these last couple of weeks, utilizing Motel 6 here. So there are those organizations and we just are not at a, at a point as a city to have dedicated funds to be able to do that. And I think with the relationship and what Canby PD has done and what Canby Fire does is they have a great pulse, a great feel of the pulse on what's going on with that. And so they're very quick to respond and help those. And it's not just to like, okay, let's move on. It's like, hey, let's, you know, we have the Canby Center, we have, you know, we have these things that we can help get people to. And honestly, you know, my conversation with Chief Trow and other mayors, there's just, there is a great number that they want to live off the grid. They don't want the services. And that's, that in lies part of the challenge as well of getting services to those that have a need and want the services versus those that have a perceived need or perceived want, that don't want them. So that's kind of what is going on on a grander scale in, in the Portland metro area. And we're not, we're not immune to it. We're not going to be immune to it. It is going to be something that is going to increase as we grow. You know, so does that, I think what we do currently is a breathable plan that can be adapted and changed.
My, my, my suggestion or what I would kind of, I could see is, is it sounds like there is a plan that people are dealing with it, but it'd be nice to have it consolidated in one, one spot so that the public could, everybody kind of can know what the plan is. Because PD has its own plan, which is good, and Fire has its plan. And then we're talking about public monies here right now, that this part of this agreement is for public monies that we're going to be responsible dividing up. It's just good to have everybody know that this is a plan and maybe the plan gets formed and then maybe it gets improved as, as circumstances. But I just, I, I am uncomfortable with the idea of, of anything goes because, and I don't, I'm not accusing that to be the way it is, but without a central, some sort of central planning, that perception could, could easily arise that, you know, anything goes. And you hear people talking here and there about what's, what's, what's being done. And it's good to know that things are being done, but then you just wonder sometimes what to do. And so if you have a nice plan that says, this is the plan, then we can say, oh, what are we doing? Well, here's the plan. And are we following the plan? Well, that discussion after the plan's made, but without the plan, you can't even accuse anybody of not following the plan.
Got you. No, appreciate it. Counselor Patton?
Yeah, I agree. I agree with Counselor Sterns. You know, we, I understand that we have these plans and they're kind of like an internal thing, but it might be good to actually get them down on paper of, you know, what the plans are, how the, what organizations are involved, how they sort of mesh together. So that way if someone in the community says, hey, you know, yada, yada, we could say, well, here's, here's the plan. Here's, here's the information of how this all works, rather than saying, well, Canby PD knows what they're doing, Canby Fire knows what they're doing. Don't worry about it.
Canby Center knows what they're doing.
Yeah.
And they do have different ideas. Like the one thing is I have no, like, it's just different scenarios. I know a family that just lost their job and needs a place to stay. That's one scenario. The other scenario is there's a guy next to me on the street corner that's talking to somebody that's not there. That's a different scenario and there are completely different problems of completely different solutions, but it'd be nice to say, what can I do about it? And say, well, well, here's a plan. Here's what we do about it in these different scenarios.
Okay.
I think this is an excellent item for your goal-setting discussion and.
I wrote that down.
And that's the next thing that I want to talk about. Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or questions on the intergovernmental agreement update? No, good conversation. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
New business, discussion regarding council goal session agenda. Ms. Eileen?
So counsel, there is a packet at your places and we emailed it out this afternoon as well. So the agenda that we designed is a Friday night, January 31st agenda, starting at 3:00 PM, going until 8:00 PM or however long it takes to go through the, the agenda. If it's nine or seven, we shall see. So the agenda calls for welcome and agenda overview, goal updates, goal refinement, dinner break, a brief dinner break. You can decide if you want to take a break or if you want to get some food and keep working. Goal refinement, part two, and then wrap up the next step. So in your packet, what you have is a third quarter goal update from, from this year, the goal-setting session that you had a year ago. So take a look at that. And then what you also have in your packet is a report from all of the various departments of the city that, that identifies briefly the accomplishments for fiscal year 2024, 25, work that's still in progress, and then proposed work for 25, 26. So my request is, look at this material. If you have any questions on it, if we weren't thorough enough, feel free to ask me that question. I will feed it to the departments and then the department heads will, can respond to it either in email or that night. So the department heads will be at this goal-setting session, but they will be there to answer questions, listen, and help me discern essentially what you're asking for. So they won't have, they won't be presenting these work plans. They will just be there to answer questions and listen. That way, as I, you know, it's very difficult for me to hear everything that the council is saying and to be able to discern every nuance in terms of how the council phrases something. So if I have the department heads helping me hear what something was said, it just helps, it helps everybody. So, so that's what's proposed.
So Eileen, in terms of the, so thank you for this. I know we spent a lot of time having this conversation on this kind of layout to, and getting it into our hands to help expedite the work that needs to be done on Friday. Can I, can I and the council have a deadline on, on questions or clarifications that we need to get to you to best turn them around to your team to have them ready for Friday?
If you could look at this material and let me know if you have questions on it by this Friday, that would give me a week to turn it around, have the department director look at it and, you know, some may be easy questions, some may be hard, I don't know.
And so.
By Friday, this Friday.
End of day?
Yes.
And what is?
11:59?
And what is?
11:59.
That is your end of day?
You know, if you need Saturday and Sunday, take that as well.
Okay.
She just wants it by the time she comes in Monday morning.
And she, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
And Eileen is here at 6:00 AM on Monday mornings. I know that for a fact. So 5:59, you got to have it in your inbox.
Or else you can't ask it.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
I, I remember different conversations that said that the first of February would be, is that no longer the case? No, nothing on the first of February?
Saturday is being held as an, as an, what do we want to call it? A slush day, a carryover. So if we're not able to get things done to the point where we're satisfied with it, then yes, it, we may need to carry over to Saturday. And I know that we've got a number of counselors that will not be able to be in attendance on Saturday, and so we will have to figure out.
If I delay things out, I can get Paul Michaels done and none of theirs. I'm just kidding. No, the, okay, no, I'm just wondering if I can, if I still need to keep Saturday.
Yes, keep Saturday available. And so speaking of, of your comment, I, I do recommend that those that may not be here on Saturday, you know, should definitely take the opportunity to get said what needs to be said and on the table on Friday so it can be dealt with to at least a level of the satisfaction. So we did go back to SWS.
Ashley.
Yeah, Ashley there. And I mean, they're booked. They are booked into March and so we've got them on, on contract for, you know, Friday and Saturday. And so if we don't need Saturday, great, we have the gift of time. If we need it, then we will hammer out as best we can, the way I, in a conversation with Eileen, looking at it and with Ashley was that regardless of what happens, whether it's all done on Friday or it's carries over to Saturday, there is still going to be some sort of a need for us to get together in some sort of a work session or part of a council meeting to discuss what are, what's the final. what's the final draft like we did last year. So just laying that all out there on the, on the turf for everybody. So, yes, Councilor Davis.
So, Eileen, how do we deal with any new items that we want to bring up at the goal setting session?
Those should be brought up on Friday night.
On Friday night?
Yes.
Okay. So you don't need those items then sent to you?
If you want to send them to me, I'm happy to, to collect them. But, but please do mention them Friday night.
So can I, can I just, can I piggyback on that at least?
Sure.
If there are new items that maybe that aren't in here, then I would say, put it on staff's radar so that they're aware that this is going to be a conversation topic. So they can at least prepare for that conversation.
Okay.
So it's like, yeah, we want to talk about a homeless plan, homelessness plan for Canby, then add that to your list to Eileen so that if that is something then that we want to talk about as a, as a goal for 2025.
Yeah. So if you have questions on what's here or you have something new that you want to submit, send it to me and I will, I will, I will either ask the department director, you know, can they, can they answer the question? Or it will be collated so that all the council gets the information.
Gentlemen on line, any comments or questions? No? Grooby. The official mayor term, Grooby. And then we'll move on from new business, moving into mayor's business. In your packet, I asked staff to include a joint values and outcomes for the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. So this committee, I have been co-chairing with Commissioner Savis for a number of years now. And so at our retreat last year, the members of C4 and a number of the county commissioners and staff came up with what we felt were our goals and values and desired outcomes for the state legislative transportation package that is going to be a big conversation here for the legislature. Now, this is, this document hasn't changed at all. We as a council did support this values and outcomes to be able to be signed onto with our logo to go to all of the representatives in not just the Clackamas County group, but also across all of the legislative bodies to know where we as a Clackamas County stood on the transportation package. So we just felt as a, as an executive board for C4 to send this back out with changes of mayors and councillors in Clackamas County just to see if cities were still wanting to sign on, on this project. So I didn't want to commit the council to it. So that's why I bring it to you all to just need a consensus to say, yeah, we're still, these still apply and we still want the legislature to fight for a, a funding package that hopefully does not entail too much tolling. Councilor Patton.
So I guess my question is going to be with the recent executive order that essentially put a halt to the infrastructure plan and all the money involved in that. Do, is there, and I, I'm assuming they're going to need to formulate an idea of how that's going to impact all of this.
Yes. And that's what the legislature will be taking up as part of that EO from the governor and where that's all going to fall. Because we saw there was a massive shift. So like the Abernathy project, so that is now no longer funded and neither is the I-205 widening is no longer funded. All that funding was moved to Rose Quarter and Interstate Bridge.
No, 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 I'm not talking about that funding. I'm talking about, we're talking about under the infrastructure program that was put in by our previous president. There was millions of dollars that were going to be seeded out through the government for various infrastructure projects. And the other day, there was an executive order that put a halt to all of that spending. That is going to have an impact on this, I'm assuming. So I'm going to be curious as to what sort of projects are going to be impacted now for that yet more decrease in funding available for these projects.
So I misunderstood the EO piece. Sorry, I was going back to Governor Kotek. But yes, that I don't have an answer for. I'm presuming that that's going to have to be something that Governor Kotek and the legislature are going to have to contend with. And what is that going to mean from, for funding across, across state and not just roads and highways, but all, all infrastructure projects? So I don't have an answer for that right now.
Just putting it on the radar.
No, it's, it's out there. So if you currently, so if this council is okay with being on this, this piece going forward or going to the legislature? Paul, or sorry, Councilor Waterman and Maldonado?
Okay.
Okay. Well, then I will notify the county that we are still on board. I didn't have any other mayor's business at this point. So we'll go into council comments and liaison reports. And we're going to start with Councilor Patton.
Wee. So not a whole lot going on city-wise in, in my bucket for this. I will say that we do have one individual who, who has expressed an interest in joining the Heritage and Landmarks Commission. And so one of the things that came up during the Community Engagement Academy, right? Was that sometimes applying for these open positions can be a bit cumbersome. So I worked out with the mayor, a sort of expedited process of how this person can kind of, without having to go through the whole online thing. And we'll be meeting tomorrow evening to give them a quick interview. And then essentially they'll come up on the agenda. They're gonna, they're gonna, barring them like setting the room on fire in their interview or something along those lines, they'll probably get on. And so they're going to attend the next meeting. And if for some reason they are chosen to be on like some sort of leadership position within the Heritage and Landmarks Commission, because they're going to be doing it that evening, it'll just be, you know, pursuant upon them actually being appointed to the, to the board. So, but yeah, so that's it. I think there's still going to be four, is it four more after filling this one? I think it's four more open seats on that. So we'll be putting out the all call for, for folks on that. And I noticed that the Planning Commission meeting is canceled, correct? The next Planning Commission meeting is canceled. So yeah, that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, sir. Councilor Maldonado, any comments?
I do have one comment that I'd like to make, and that's to wish the Big Prairie Middle School wrestling team good luck tomorrow evening. They are going to, for the novice wrestlers, they are going to be attending their first tournament.
Wonderful. Thank you, sir. Council President Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a lot to report. Traffic Safety Commission was just kind of an informational chat because we didn't have a quorum, which is the first time that's happened. The school board meeting. Angela Hawes got the Kiwanis Care Award this month. So congratulations to her and thank you, Angela, for all you do for our kiddos. They did do a presentation, quite a lengthy slideshow presentation regarding the budget. I won't try to regurgitate it all, but there's just suffice it to say that they do have quite a budget shortfall coming into the next year. I guess the blame could be held with downward enrollment and upward impurs. And so everything's just, the math ain't math. And so they're going to be doing some community outreach. They're going to be explaining all their situation to the parents and the teachers. And they're going to be doing visits to all the schools so the parents can come and learn what's going on and, and what they can help do about it, which will probably be entailing some letter writing to the legislature and such. So just look for more information on that in the coming weeks and months so we can help the schools with their budget. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. In regards to the Park and Rec, we have not held our monthly meeting and we hope to hold a meeting next week or very soon. I'm going to be meeting with the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee. We have been working with the city administrator and the finance director in regards to trying to figure out exactly what our balances are so that they can prioritize the, the projects for next year to follow the complan, or the master plan. But first we had to have the right amount so that we knew how much that we could figure for the project. So we have finally landed on that one. The bigger one that I wanted to bring to the council's attention is the park maintenance fee. What we've discovered is that somewhere along the way, a decision was made to divide up the park maintenance fee 60% to projects, 40% to administrative or personnel charges. And based upon what I've read today, it looks like that was a based, that was made by staff decision by, and by an email. And I, so I'm asking that we hold a work session. Since we, we canceled the work session, maybe we can hold a work session to dive into the park maintenance fee a little bit so we can get everybody up to speed on the park maintenance fee. And the intent of the park maintenance fee, I've sat out there and up here in regards to the park maintenance fee and what that intent was for the park maintenance fee. But I know that the frustration that the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee has is that when we're asking for an itemized amount in regards to how much has been spent out of the park maintenance fee, it can't be produced. We can get a bottom line figure of how much is left, but we don't know what was charged to that account. And so moving forward, we're, we're going to ask that we, we do have that so that we can keep track of what's being charged and how it's being charged to the park maintenance fee. But I think that we need to bring the council up to speed because I don't think that that should be a policy decision based on the city council in regards to how that park maintenance fee is charged since it's an ordinance passed by the city council in regards to the park maintenance fee. So I would like some concurrence that we hold a quick work session in regards to and get all the details worked out with the city administrator on the park maintenance fee. Because that's going to be right around the corner where we're going to have to look at it again. So we better get a good handle on it and what, what the money is being spent for out of the park maintenance fee. So now that we're getting close to figuring out how much money we actually have in the park maintenance fee, we're able to get the committee back together again because our goal is to present to the public works director how much, what our recommendations would be moving out of the master plan, the Park and Rec master plan projects into next year's budget. They recommend that back to the city council during the budget process. So I'm going to be, be meeting with the Chair of the Park and Rec Committee tomorrow for coffee and so that we can get that committee moving forward again because there's been a lot of frustration there and hopefully we've gotten past that. In regards to the adult center, no new action other than they're in the permitting process. And they are working with the Planning Department in regards to the permitting process. The biggest issue that they have in that is the sidewalks up there on Territorial Road. Just the fact that this is not a new building, it's an existing building. And as that intersection improves, maybe that's when we look at putting in the sidewalks and stuff. But that's something that they're going to need some assistance on because that could be a very expensive process in regards to putting in the sidewalks, especially since they're not a new building, it's an existing building up there as well. So they're working with the Planning Department on that and moving forward with the permitting process. So that's, that's going very well. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would be, I would be for holding a work session about that. And then I would just plan to see that the park maintenance fee program was essentially mirrored from the street maintenance fee program. And so if some, if an itemized, like what, if an itemized list of what is being spent out of the park maintenance fee bucket is being sorted, then I would expect the same for the street maintenance fee so that we can track those things closely as well.
I agree.
Because I know, I know when it was created that there was a certain amount of the fee that was, that had to go towards billing because essentially the, the city was building, a billing department from scratch because we weren't doing the billing in the beginning. Because to go in the Wayback Machine, at that point in time, Canby Utility was, was doing the billing for the sewer fee. And then when we implemented the street maintenance fee, Canby Utility said they would not bill for that. And that is when we had to create our own billing department. And so some of the, a percentage of the street maintenance fee went towards covering some of those costs. And so, you know, just checking to make sure that that is all copacetic as well.
Councilor Sterns.
All right, my turn. I went to the Canby Utility Board meeting and I was really good. I did not mention Fur and Fourth Avenue at all. And not once while I was at the meeting, although many people mentioned it to me afterwards. Apparently, I don't know how people know that I worried about Fur and Fourth Street. But anyway, one of the things they did over there is they actually donated some green power credits to the city parks. Now, I'm not exactly sure what that meant, but I think it's a good thing. But I'm not sure, like I say, does, do you know what that means?
Yeah. So if you, you have the ability in Canby to pay an additional fee for a certain amount of green power. And the money that is generated from that fee goes towards helping with development and such of, of more green power within the state. The Canby Utility Board donates a certain number, a certain dollar amount of green credits to the city of Canby that is in line with how much they use electricity wise for the various parks and, and things like that. So that's, that's what that is.
So is it money or is it just credits?
It's essentially, essentially money that the Canby Utility Board is then putting into the fund that goes towards developing more technology for, for green power in the state.
Okay. Well, so that explains that. The other thing they did at the Canby Utility Board, which I thought was really impressive, is they got all trained on all, well, I don't know if all, but a lot of the ethics laws. And, and I thought it was a really good presentation done by our law, our law firm. And it would be nice, I think, to have this Canby City Council that we could have the training too. Because the only thing I didn't like about that, because since I was not on the Canby Utility Board, I didn't feel appropriate to ask questions, even though I had lots of questions I wanted to ask myself. But it was not the appropriate time, I felt, to interrupt the meeting. So I did not. I did restrain myself from doing that. But I think I would suggest that we do, as, as a city council, maybe even once a year, have a training session so we all remember all these laws. Because I don't know if any of you want to be my cellmate in jail when I go to jail for breaking some law or not. But if you want to avoid that, it might be good to get some training. I attended the Bridging Cultures Dinner and Councilor Waterman was there. I didn't see any of the other councillors there, but I could have missed somebody. And that, so some good food and lots of fun there. And I got to actually talk to some of the board members there on Bridging Cultures. And so could maybe end up having some more closer relationships in the future with that. I attended the Canby Civic Academy. I'd like to thank Jamie for putting that on. I think that was very useful. A lot of people were there because they're curious about how the city works. And I think that's, that'll be a very, very good thing going forward. I just encourage that we get feedback from people so that, so that we can just keep making it better. And I anticipate that should be a tradition. keep making it better and I, and I anticipate that should be a tradition, um, going forward, um, to bring more people into community service and just explain to more people how things One, just comment of my, the, and I talked to Eileen a little bit about this, um, we're talking about some raising some fees in the future for people, households that, um, I'm not necessarily opposed to that. I think there's some fee raising that needs to happen, um, to, to account for inflation and other kinds of things that are happening. But I asked, um, Eileen, I would just repeat that we have some sort of work session on the city of Canby's collection procedures. So if you raise my sewer fee or essentially raise my sewer fee by adding an extra street maintenance fee, and I decide not to pay it because I kind of want to pay it, um, what is the next step the city does so that we, so we can figure out and explain to people that if you're unable to or maybe unwilling, what the, the process is and make sure that process is, um, I guess charitable to those who are in need, um, and also, um, fair to the city as far as that goes. But I think that's something that I'm not quite sure what the, I got one collection letter from Canby a few years ago on transit tax that was, I thought was really sternly worded and I may be very upset it came to Canby. And this is several years ago and they solved it like in five minutes, but still, um, I'm just curious about what the legal process and how we collect these fees that people either can't or won't pay. So that's just one of the things I think that should be brought into any discussion about raising fees because we raise them a lot, maybe it'll, it'll be hardship for more people. If we, um, a little, it'll be less of a hardship, but it should be a part of the discussion. Because I mean, you can't turn, I don't want you to turn off my sewer if I don't pay it. That wouldn't be very good for the city to have my sewer turned off.
Okay.
I can tell you, it's, it's actually part of the ordinance when it comes to the street maintenance fee and the park maintenance fee, that if people don't pay it, a lien is put on their home.
So if, so if a lien is put on the home, then in essence, now I know there's legal distinctions here, so don't get mad at me, City Attorney, but in essence, it becomes a property tax. Because that's what property tax is, is a lien on, on, on the property. And the only issue is what, what order the lien is in because property tax, it's a priority. But if we explain to people that, you know, eventually it'll be collected, uh, one way or the other, I don't know if the city has been doing that or not, been putting liens on people's houses or not, but I suggest that would be, it's a very, I think, a very equitable way of doing it because if somebody isn't willing to pay, we're not going to foreclose over the lien amount, but if, once it gets, this house does get sold, we do collect the money that way. So, anyway, if that's the case, I think that's a good, good thing. But if that's the case, I think it should be brought up and part of the discussion.
Councilor Waterman.
Uh, yes, I went to the Bike and Ped Advisory and, uh, it was a great discussion there. Uh, it's two of the main things from there, uh, the Public Works Director, uh, attended and provided, uh, some, uh, budgetary and, uh, priorities for the capital improvement. Discussed, uh, you know, sidewalks, uh, and some of the other projects, uh, for pedestrian safety. And also the Bike and Ped Committee is sending, uh, a letter to the Oregon State Parks and Rec Department, uh, on, uh, suggesting clarifications and, um, assisted electrical bikes, uh, classifications. There's apparently there's some, some rule laws that were changed from the state level and, and, uh, it's still being, uh, how would you say? The Parks Department is still trying to figure out how to, to, uh, implement those, et cetera. So, uh, they're writing a letter, uh, in support of, uh, classifications for the electrical assist bikes. I attended, uh, the library board and, um, so a great discussion there as well, made some policy updates on, uh, one of the, the main ones was, apparently there is the policy on, uh, people leaving their belongings in the, the library and then, you know, spreading it out on the table and then, and then leaving the actual facility for a while and then coming back. So there, uh, is, they're adding that to the policy now so that there is something written saying that the staff is not going to be responsible for their, uh, for people's, um, personal belongings, et cetera. And then they're going to plan on, uh, reviewing budget, uh, for the upcoming budget. And, uh, they did get the booking comment. Um, they got, they actually have the author. It's a pretty well-known, very famous author that has agreed to, uh, to do a, uh, virtual session with the community, which is really exciting. First was able to, uh, to get that taken care of. And so sometime, I believe in April or towards the end of the booking comment reading, uh, the author is actually going to do a, a virtual event with the city, with the library. Uh, that's all that I have.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Good updates. Uh, next on the agenda is City of Striders Business and Staff Reports.
Um, so council, um, this was a bi-monthly, uh, meeting where you have the bi-monthly reports in your packet. Wanted to point out a few things. In terms of, um, administration, um, the, um, goal number 5.1, um, to conduct the community survey, I want to talk with the council a little bit more at goal-setting about, um, I haven't done anything on that and I'm not sure that it needs to be done after all. So I want to talk with the council a little bit more about that. Updating council policies and guidelines, um, I know a subcommittee has been meeting with the city attorney and the city recorder on that. So, um, I think we're getting to the point where we are just about ready to present something to the, to the full council, um, on that. Um, we have been working with the Canby Adult Center on the relocation. We got everything, um, um, in place to accommodate their move and, um, and make sure that we don't have the CDVG obligations. Um, I also approved an expenditure authorization, um, to release the 512,000 to the Canby Adult Center, so they should have that, um, now. Um, over in the Finance Department, I wanted to note that we have our audit presentation will be scheduled for, um, February 5th work session. So that's coming up. And then, um, over in, um, wastewater treatment, um, plant, pub, in the Public Works Department, um, just wanted to call your attention to, um, the focus on a couple of things, um, one being a focus on maintenance, safety and training, um, that, um, that they are taking a look at what their training needs and safety needs are and, and really putting a, a program in place on that. And then they are, they have been invited to participate in a shark tank, um, like, um, grant program, um, where, um, the Canby Wastewater Treatment Plant has been selected to participate in the annual CIS Shark Tank Competition. A team submitted a compelling safety improvement proposal and now has the chance to win the grand prize of $7,500. As one of three finalists, the team will present their idea via video presentation at the CIS Conference on February 28th. The proposal will be judged by the audience and, um, prizes will be given out with the grand prize of 7,500, first runner-up 5,000, second runner-up 2,500. Um, and the cash award would be used to implement, um, the, the proposal that they developed. So I just thought that was really unique, um, and I just want to applaud the, um, Jerry and the wastewater treatment plant staff for that. So, that's all I have.
Sorry about the uncomfortable silence. I had to take a note.
No problem.
Next up is another opportunity for citizen inputs. Canby citizens, morning to opine? None? Okay. Action Review, Teresa.
You approved the consent agenda, approved ordinance 1639 to a second reading on February 5th. You approved to table ordinance 1640 to a future meeting. You adopted resolution 1423. And that's it.
Okay. Sounds good to me. Just to remind everybody in TV land and those that join us here, next month, we will be back on our normal scheduled meeting cycle of the first and third Wednesdays, um, since there is no holiday that will jam us up. So just mark your calendars on that. Um, other than that, oh, and I will say, yes, my Ohio State Buckeyes won the national championship. I would just say that. Um, all those in favor of, or sorry, can I take a motion to adjourn?
Let's move, Ty, yes.
Yes, okay.
I will say.
I'm sorry.
Do you like the Buckeye candies?
So, hey, wait, we have a motion on the table.
We can't have a discussion yet.
Oh, I'm discussing them candies. They're super good.
Oh, yeah, the Buckeyes, those are tasty candies. He did. Yeah. Um, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Canby, we are adjourned. Good night. See you in two weeks.
So, the Ohio State.